Let me do a test on that actually real quick. Come over here. Looks good there. This. What's up everybody? How we doing? It's your boy Joe. Looks good. This looks good. Everything looking good. Just wanna test some things out real quick. We're getting very, I'm gonna get set up real quick. Quick. Test on here. Just wanna see if that populates. Oh, and it did. Boom, baby. Cool. I got the Facebook chat working on it. So now sometimes it's one of my faults is, especially when I did. Um, stream before on Facebook was never modder in the chat. Well, now I'll see it, so. Alright. Cool, cool, cool. Cool, cool. And this seems to be fine. Looks good there. Looks good check here. For connection, that's good. And we are up in. Alright. Cool. That's cool. Alright, good. It's your boy Joey. We're gonna be getting back into the, um, the lab that we were. We were working on yesterday, um, for y'all on Facebook. Uh, what up David? How we doing, brother? Yeah, for those on Facebook, um, I am pretty much just brushing up on some of the. Fundamental, uh, technology knowledge and stuff like that. So I'm just working, working through the basics. Um, on up, on some of the stuff. Some of the, you know, technology stuff from networking to coding to cloud. And topics like that. So we're just going through the process again. This is Cisco Modern Lab. If anybody's. Anybody's interested in any of this stuff that I bring up today, a lot of the stuff's in the description. All the links are in the description. Um, if you guys have any questions on it, then, you know, please feel free to ask. You know, it's part of, part of the stream too at the same time, so. So this lab we were working on yesterday, um, we finished off, we had. See if this, no, it's not. Oh, my writing went away. Nah, I did reset the computer though a couple times. My favorite green. Alright, so yesterday we had configured, um, RIP on all these routers here. And we went through the configuration process to, um. You know, just go through the, the configuration of how to set up RIP, um, some of the concepts of RIP. Um, and why you would do things with other things. We went over, looked at the, uh, PDUs. Um, because we analyzed some of the traffic. We went over hop count, you know, and I, I was, I was, I was making, um. I was making some fundamental errors. I was, I was thinking about hop count. I was thinking hop count about interfaces instead of actually routers. I was thinking. Interfaces, so if it went out, um, even if it went through a router, if it went out one interface through the other, that would be, you know, that was a count. I counted that, but. It's actual routers, so. But we saw that and we figured that out. And then we, man, let me see, pull this down here. We created, we added a couple host computers. We did have to shut down some of the, um. Router nodes here, um, because again, this is, this is still, this is a free, guys, this is a free virtual machine. Um, that you guys can download and run yourselves on your own hosts and stuff. Um, to do this itself, but you're only allowed five, um, host nodes, um, this, the unmanned switches and the. Uh, exterior connections are all for, you know, they're, you can have as many as you want, but. Hosts, you can only have five, so. But either way, what we. What I lapped up was, um. Because of RIP and the routing tables and what the routers knew, and again, we weren't doing any auto summarization. We had shut down our auto summarization. Um, and when you shut down our summarization, um, routers won't advertise, you know, some, you know, known. Um. They won't advertise, like, if they have, like, you know, VLAN setups and stuff like that. That shuts that down and won't advertise pretty much what it, what it knows. It'll only. Advertise what you configure. And we actually saw that too, um, here at, on router five, um, when we didn't have a, I believe it's, um. This network over here, we didn't, weren't advertising that network via this router, so router five was taking. The super long way, uh, to send traffic to this network here, when it could have easily. Made one hop and set traffic there via RIP. So this was via RIP. Today, we're gonna be diving into OSPF and some of the other, um. Some of the other, um, routing protocols today. Um, I get it here, actually, let's pull it up, so. Um, this is something I found today too, um, and I, the link is in the description, guys, so if you, um. If you wanna take a look at this documentation, uh, this is the Cisco Modern Lab Community GitHub page. Um, if you're not familiar with GitHub, you know, it, it's a, uh, it's pretty much, it's, it's a code repo. But it's a community too, and it's been built up over the years, and there is just the wealth of knowledge within GitHub. Um, if you have any interest in learning, you know, topics of anything that has to do with, you know. Technology, you know, these, you know, today's, today's, uh, computer technology, coding, website design, all that stuff. It's all. There's a repo somewhere and GitHub for it, I can almost guarantee it. So, the link for this documentation is also in the description, guys, um, for you on, on YouTube and Facebook as well. Wanna take a look at it, um, I'm guessing, again, I just found all this today. Um, so I'm just, I was going over it and I was like, wow, there's some good stuff in here. It looks to be what this, um. Go down to the, has the, read me right here. And I, I, I believe I've taken classes, um, I believe his name is Hank. His name is Hank Preston, yeah. His name is Hank Preston, again, on, uh, O'Reilly Media. Um, great place, again, O'Reilly Media, um, but Hank did do, um, virtual classes there. I believe I did take a couple of his, I believe I did. Uh, but this looks like to be, um, something that they're doing. And I believe it's still going on to, say, spring twenty twenty-five, so we're kinda in the spring twenty twenty-five. Wonder if they've kinda finished up or if they're gonna keep going. It looks like something that's on their Cisco Live Network, their Cisco Live Streaming Network. I believe these two guys do have their own, uh, YouTube page. And what, if you guys wanna find him, or on X or something like that, you guys could probably find him there. Um, but there is some good stuff in here. Um, obviously, some of the. Go back here to. What's up here? Yeah, I forgot, I forgot what that was. I'll have to go through that again. Uh. Which lab was it? So this looks like it's out of their, uh, first season, episode four. There, they were going over. The lab itself was routing fundamentals and static routes, master concepts and static routes. And it goes through. Um, see here. Setup scenario. Part one of this lab says to deploy static routes to ensure that the branch, um, branch locations have internet access by implementing routing redundancy to ensure connectivity between PC. Server devices in case of failure across the primary OSPF pass, path, and part two. You explore how routers select best path by comparing connected and static routes. Now, we didn't configure any static routes, um, in our lab setup. Maybe we can go through, through some of that. Um. Again, just to, to, to really. Smashing these, uh, core concepts here. Yes. Do you have a lab set up? Well, we got five routers now, I think, so, I mean, I think he's just looking at three branches here. That's what he was looking at. Um, and if the music's too loud, guys, just give me, um. Give me a heads up in the chat if that music's too loud. I can always turn the music down for you guys. Alright, so there's some, there's some configuration stuff right here. We got. Exploring the route selection process. In this part of the lab, you'll explore how routers. Routers build its routing table by selecting the best path available. You'll also learn about how routers. Use the routing table to make packet, packet forwarding decisions based on the longest, uh, longest prefix match. Longest prefix match, and that goes to. Um, subnetting, um, and knowing, knowing how to do subnetting math and stuff like that and how that, um. How some of the, you know, how that binary breaks down. So when you come to think about it, you know, what's, what prefixes are closer to where. Um, when it comes to that binary, um, when it breaks down to the binary and routers, routers use, make, you know, use that as part of their, their decisions too. And that's why, um. What's that? CID. Just look at that terminology up real quick. I don't know what I did to ChatGPT, but it don't like me no more. I think I broke it. It's like classless routing, classes, um. But I think it's to the principle of like how IP addresses, um. Think it has to do with like how IP addresses, uh, find themselves geologically, um. But like there's some geological idea to how IP addresses were originally given out. Uh, that way, you know, obviously routers. Can utilize that. Um. Got to put these ticked over. Oh, there we go. Class list domain routing. Just running the places previous. Uh, variable length mask enables, uh, CID, uh, CIDR allows for variable length subset mask. VLSM enabling the division of IP address spaces into subnets of varying sizes, which provides more efficient. Use of IP address. This flexibility helps reduce the waste of IP address and allows for, for better route, um, error, aggregation? Words, words are hard. Uh, minimizes the number of entries in routing tables, um. In the CIDR, uh, notation, the IP address is followed by the slash, and that's where the slash comes from. Slash mask, uh, and the number that indicates the length of the network prefix. Uh, for example, the one nine two one six eight dot one dot zero slash twenty-four represents the IP, um, address block where the twenty-four. Bits are the network part, leaving the eight, um, remaining bits as the host part, so yeah. Okay. And, you know, I, I kinda, you know, I knew that. I just had to clarify. Terminology there. Cool. Yeah, so in this lab, um. Looks like we're, um, and we'll, we'll do this too. We'll configure ERGRP and OSPF. I wanna look that up too. Completionary purpose, what is? Can you give me? Can you give me a? Can you give me a description? Man, it's very, mine is out of it today. ERGRP. So while that's working on that. Oh, and this was the other thing I did. Where did he do it? Where did he mention it? Something about, um, and we're gonna do this too, because I wanna see if the same result happens. Um, all the five routers are configured with this loopback address. So all five routers are configured with the same loopback address as two hundred dot two hundred dot two hundred dot two hundred. Two hundred dash twenty-four to create an interesting result across the routing tables. R1 is also configured with the static route of two hundred dot two hundred dot two hundred dot two hundred dash, uh, dot zero dash twenty-four. Explore this result in routing configuration. And I saw this when it came up, and then again, that was on. Which router did he? I think it's, uh, all the routers have that configuration, but it was on, yeah, it was router two. And if you look at router two, router two has a local link to each of the, um, networks here, so now. Um, router two has four interfaces. Each one of these four interfaces is connected locally to, uh, one of, one of these other networks that the. Other routers are at. And what that creating by using the same loopback address and all of them was on actual router two here. Um, on router two, instead of using, um. It forced it, like forced it, and there's an explanation, we'll go into that, but it kinda like forced it to. Instead of using like the, it's link local, um, stuff, it gives you more reasoning down here, um. With some of the cost and stuff like that, using that loopback address. We'll get back. As I say, um, and in this other routing table shows, R1, R1, R3, R4, and R5 have directly connected local, uh, connected local, uh, loopback, uh, zero interfaces. As a preferred route to, uh, two hundred dot two hundred dot two hundred dot zero dash twenty-four network. R1, R3, R4, and R5 are learning three ERGRP routes. For, for the links between them. And R2, R2 has multiple entries for two hundred dot two hundred dot two hundred dot zero dash twenty-four. Learned from ERGRP, multiple entries for two hundred dot two hundred dot two hundred dot two hundred dash thirty-two. Learned from OSPF. Since the metrics are identified, uh, since the met, the metrics are identical for all four. The two hundred and the loopback, we're just gonna say the loopback address and I'll be like repeating that a thousand times. Uh, ERGRP routes. Four zero six hundred for all four. Are installed in the routing table for load balance, and the same logic applies to all four OSPF entries. The metric of eleven. Yeah, okay, so this is what he's saying, the OSPF, uh, the ER, ERGRP cost, and this is the OSPF cost, metric cost for OSPF is eleven. Has to do with something with load balance. Um, here's the, um, cost table right here for routing, um, so we have connected zero, static, uh, one. ERGRP at ninety, OSPF at one ten, and RIP at one twenty, and we can play with that too to make, um. OSPF choose a better route than RIP would. And this is on. And it looks like, again, with OSPF, you have to identify, you have to statically identify the areas you want to advertise for. Yeah, cuz it's, I believe it's link local addresses in this network range, if I'm not mistaken. Ten one dot two. Yeah, ten dot one dot two, so that's its link local address, and where else is it advertising? Local, so those are all those two local addressing that R1 has, and that's why. This configuration is advertising that. I wonder what that bit means at the end of that OSPF configuration, that point three. What that identifies. Loopback. Yeah, I wonder what the, the. Why they're working. So in ERGRP, obviously, that's a border, uh, that's not a border, um, yeah, that's a border gateway, border gateway. Um, so that's a bigger picture, so the network, that's why it's encompassing that whole entire network. OSPF, okay. So we got some. Got some stuff to do over. Go back to our lab here. And currently, uh, since we don't have any of the, um. We don't have any of these switches on currently right now, um, RIP won't be doing, um. We are, our. Our routing tables should all be pretty much empty. We'll take a look at that. And go over here so you guys can take a look. So you guys can see that now. Uh, so you guys can see. Um. All we have right now in our routing tables are our local, our local links, so we have the one nine two, one six eight dot zero, and the one nine two dots, one six eight dot ten. Networks here. So these are our two local networks that we have right here. If we do a, uh, show. You can see these are our two local links right here. Uh, we do have a loopback address, um. You know what I'm probably gonna do? I'm probably, cuz I wanna see something similar like that come up in our lab, so I'm going to. As in the lab here. So we'll do that same thing. With a very similar, um. Loopback address on all of our routers. So let's go back to our routers here. So we're going to global configuration mode. And, yeah, and then that happened. Let's go to one of our routers. Old fat fingers over here. Um, you know what I should do? Let's do that. No. I think it's no IP domain name. Oh, this doesn't happen again. So let's go into interface, uh, we'll say back zero. I'm gonna say, I'm gonna change that IP address to, um, IP address. And I believe it's two five, but. And with that, just make sure I did that, so we'll do a two show. Okay, and we've updated our, um, loopback address. On R1. On our one. And this must be our four, yeah, it is our four, our four has, uh. Many, um, many networks on its interfaces here, we can play around with that too. As that lab insists there is something to see when we do this with all of our. Loopback addressing. Okay, so that's all up and like I said, like we showed on, um. On router one there, uh, do show. Uh, we have nothing, um, with RIP or anything like that, um, and we could take a look at our. Our RIP config here. So if we go right here, we have our router RIP configuration, uh, we don't have any other routing protocols currently. Um, configured in these routers currently, that's sure they're gonna change, but, um, the only networks. Um, that I currently had configured, uh, were the networks when we had done the original lab, um. Our four here, let's do the same, let's just show that as well, do show, um. So if we come here, um. This is our four and these are the networks that we have RIP advertising, we're not advertising the, um, one nine two, one six eight dot forty network. Um, over our RIP configuration here, um, and that's why when we went. And. We were at this host, we could ping host two from host one, so if we logged into host one. We were able to send traffic, um, we were able to send traffic through our five to our, to our four here. And our four knowing the, um, local link local address to host two here. It was able to forward that traffic and it was able to then forward the replies back to host one because our five knows, you know. Knows host one's link local address, the problem though with host two. Host two were to ping host one, um, it would be able to send the ping out, our four would forward the information. Um, to our five, our five would forward it to host one because our five knows where, knows the link local. Network of host one, um, but when host one would send the reply back to our five. Um, our five had no knowledge of host two's, um, link local address. Um, so then it would not forward their replies back, instead it would, it would forward. Um, error messages back to host one and host two would never get the, the pings. But again, remind you, host one could ping host two, host two could not ping host one and that is simply because. We're not advertising their. Link local, uh, net- their local network to these other routers here. That's because we don't have auto summarization on again, um, that goes back to that, so we're gonna maintain that, we're not gonna change that. For now, um. Till we do, until we do. I guess we should advertise, yeah, we should advertise on the routers. On our RIP configurations, on every single one of our other routers, we should advertise our loopback, so let's go ahead and do that now. So we'll go over to RIP, that will bring us into, um. RIP's configuration mode here, the terminals and we'll, we'll hit it with a network and we'll say two hundred, uh, two hundred, uh. Uh, two hundred dot zero network. Okay. Advertise that now. Alright, and let's just, um, let's just confirm that. So, see now. Go down to the terminal, um, we have our router RIP and we're advertising that two hundred network now. Our four again, that's why we're advertising, uh, a couple of different networks, but remind you, we're not advertising. The forty net. Alright, so. Think we're all set here, this is local, this is five, so, um, yeah, four and ten, two hundred, perfect. Now, everything seems to be looking good for our little configuration here. And. Wonder if we turn everything on and just see RIP do its thing again, we'll run some debugging messages. Or if we go ahead and configure OSPF in our GIP, so, uh, give you guys like two seconds, because go run through the head real quick and I'll be right back. Alright, I'm back. Almost drowned. Almost drowned right there, guys, almost drowned it. Alright, uh, so maybe I should comment on either, um, either or, so. Let's do this then. Cuz I wanna see these single, um, think about things, so, let's get all these turned on, let's go to. Let's get out of there for a second, um, where's our five by the way? Actually, we should have never left router RIP configuration mode. Cuz I want debug messages. Messages. Probably turn the routers on, I just want to see. To debugs, auto bugs, it's a bug's life. So good. Yeah, everybody looks good. Love it. Looks good. Love it. Alright, there we go. Chat GPT broke. So it's in, it's not in, it's in, um. Is it user, user mode, user mode, instead of enable mode, no, this is enable mode. Yes, this is enable mode, user mode is the other mode, this is enable mode, uh, so in user mo- uh, enable mode, um. Should be able to get our debug IP RIP messages right there. So it's, um. Are we getting some messages? I didn't have the links on yet. What did it even, so we have RIP sending out. Two packets. Via nine nine two. Oh, it's, these are advertising, okay, so it's advertising, so let's go here, uh, let's start turning these things on. See what happens. Now we're probably gonna get a whole bunch of them, yeah, here we go, we're all coming in now, coming in hot, coming in like hotcakes. And we can kinda, let's turn those off for now. Alright, I'm just gonna take a look at some of these that we got, um. Alright, I'm gonna just take a look at some of these that we got. Um... Okay, so it is, it's, it's starting to learn. It's learning about, um... It is learning, um, it's learning hops, metrics, learning about networks. And if we go here and if we do a show... We're out now. Uh, what do we got here? So we have our RIP entries right here. So we have three RIP entries right here. Um, 192.168 dot 1, network, yeah, makes sense, out of, um, that. It's one hop, perfect, perfect. Four, this says two, um, the two is one hop. How does it figure two as one hop, hmm? Oh, because that's two right there. Okay, now that makes sense, makes sense. And then three, one hop, yep, because our four, four... Yeah, I look back, okay, so... Cool, now let's come over here to R4. R4 really only has one entry for RIP. And that's because our four, for the most part, is connected, um, to each local area. Now, we have an enabled OSPF, so I wonder if that's not... Let's take a look back here. Yeah, so it's not gonna do that till we enable OSPF. Okay. And OSPF. Um, let's go here. What up, Tyler? Um, what you asking, Tyler? Pull this up right here. Um, what this topology, it's weird. So are you talking about this topology right here? This is simply just, um... I don't know if there's a, like a name for this topology, but pretty much... And this is in the, um, this is in the description and the, uh, stream notes and stuff like that, whatever you want to call it. Um, but these labs here are, um, these lab guides are available, um, through the Cisco Model and Lab Community GitHub, GitHub repo here. Again, this lab that I'm doing right now, right here, is just going over routing protocols, um, currently right now. We have, uh, we only got RIP, um, configured on our routers. Um, next, we're gonna be going, we're gonna be configuring OSPF and then ERGRP. And then going over some of the differences and whatnot. I may be messing some stuff up, breaking some shit. Alright, so just trying to... Good explanation and a reasoning why we're going, what we're going and how we're going to be configuring OSPF. Some of the more nitty gritty information about it, so, um... Pretty much one of the, you know, obviously, we're, it's just like RIP, we're going to be going into router OSPF configuration mode or terminal, however you like to call it. Um, we're going to give ourselves a router ID, router ID number. I believe that these are wildcard addresses here. These are wildcard addresses. And I will get the explanation of a wildcard address to why they're used and why we use them. Um, network, this, um, this would be, um... How many networks? So... See with RIP, I didn't do the bigger network. I didn't smaller networks. And I think I'm gonna do the same thing with my OSPF configuration as well. Um, area zero, um, OSPF, I, you could have multiple areas and there's a cost to areas, I believe, or something like that. I'm pulling that all up now. That's what I'm waiting for, to, to get it all put together. Um, then we have our networks. So this was our, um, loopback address, loopback, um, network two. Again, these are wildcards. I don't know what this... Um, well, what was the IP address on that? I'm not a, explain why. That'd probably explain. To me. Oh, no, they're not. Okay, so that's the reasoning for the three. So it's just a wildcard. It's the wildcard for the network. So in our case, again, this would be just two for five right here. To encompass the network we're advertising. So I was just trying, I was just confused up on that. But I really did, I broke chat GPT. Fucking grenadeed it. OSPF 100. Um, I want to know what the 100 stands for too. Oh, here it comes finally right now. Maybe, nope, still waiting. Cause... He did these, um... Alright, finally finished. Finally finished. So here we go. OSPF, why OSPF is a link state routing protocol designed for efficiency and scalability within autonomous systems. Is why it's, it's a preferred choice, rapid, uh, um, convergence? Convergence, rapid convergence. OSPF quickly adapts to network changes, ensuring minimum downtime. Hierarchy design, it's, it's divided, it divides the network into areas, reducing routing overhead and enhancing scalability. Cost-based routing utilizes the shortest, um, path first, SPF shortest path first algorithm to determine optimum paths based on link costs. That's where I was getting confused with the link, uh, link costs and stuff like that. Open standard by, I mean, open protocol, VFF ensures, um, yeah, pretty much all vendors can use it and should use it. Router ID manually. So I'm not too curious. What's the difference between using a one or a 100? Let me do this configuration. Let's see if, um, over here, router one. And I'm gonna say router OSPF. Process ID. Now, it's just, I'm pretty sure we could probably name it, we can give it any number process ID, but there, is there a... This is some kind of, you know, to shut down if you know the process ID number. Not too sure, not too sure. Um, we'll say one, see what happens. Didn't explode. Alright, so, and then it sent us a message here. Let me pull this up so you guys can see this a little bit better here. Alright, so, um, we've just enabled OSPF on router by giving it the command, this is ID number. Alright, and then we've got our OSPF, um, event, like it just came up here. And we're gonna give each router a router ID number. And then we're gonna, yeah, and then we'll see if we'll run debug on the last one. OSPF messages come. Messages still coming through, so come here, we'll give this a router ID, number of 1 dot 1 dot 1 dot 1. And we're gonna add the two networks. So we just got our event OSPF. You router ID will take effect immediately for OSPF up. For OSPF 1, they will be reset. Um, what are my link local networks here? So let's just do, let's just take a look. So we have a one and a 10, one and a 10. So we're gonna say network zero. And we're gonna use the, um... Because he's only doing that because he's using a different range of subnet. But I'm using this subnet, so it's be zero, because all my addressing I use is in the, um... subnet range, so I'm gonna use that zero, that zero, that two for five. So a wild mask is your, is your subnet mask inverted, so, um... A slash 24, um, cided notated subnet mask is 25, 25, 25, 25, 25. Mask, we would invert that to 0 dot 0 dot 25. Oh, we gotta name the area. And we're gonna say area zero. And we're gonna run that. And we're gonna give this the next one, which is the 10 network. Back network, so 200, 200, 200, dot 0. Now, remember again, this was in the, um, 24 slash network, so if we invert it, 0 dot 0 dot 0 dot 25. Do you know, Ken? Mm-hmm, gotta have one of the chipmunks outside. Alright, so yeah, currently we don't have anything, um, obviously R1's the only, only router advertising anything for OSPF currently, so... Um, but we could take a look. We can actually see it. It looks good. It looks good. And we have OSPF, OSPF, um, process ID one. See it right there. OSPF one, yep, router ID and the local networks. We're only advertising for the local networks. That looks good, okay. Do a similar thing here on router two. OSPF, process ID one. And we're gonna give ourselves a ID, I'm gonna say 2 dot 2 dot 2 dot 2. And we're gonna give ourselves some networks. Um, let's do a show command again. Let's see... Works that are connected to us. So here on router two, uh, we have the 192.168 dot 1, the dot 2, and then our local loopback ad, uh, loopback address there. So we're gonna say network 92.168 dot 1, dot 0. 0 dot 0 dot, 0 dot 25, area zero. Looks good. Cool, and we're gonna bring this to the 2 net as well. And then our loopback work. Now we should already start making OSPF adjacencies here. And that's what this was, so we, I actually just missed it. So there's our OSPF adjacency, um, to our next door neighbor, router one. Located, you know, router ID number, it's using that on our ethernet 0 dash 0. Loading to be full, loading done. Cool, so if now we take... Our routing tables here, um, you'll see now we have an OSPF entry here, um, for the 10 network that lives on the other side of R1. Cool. Oh, so that's, that's, that's funny. Did it replace? Let's remind us of, I think it replaced the entries for RIP, OSPF replaced the entries for RIP. There's the adjacency on R1, um... We, we have an OSPF and we have a RIP. This is our... So I wonder if it's replacing those, um, those RIP routes. We'll see that as we continue along. If OSPF is replacing those RIP routes in our table, which I'm pretty sure it probably is. But we can still continue to look at things, so. Alright, so let's log into, um, router three here. Router OSPF, process ID one, um, we're gonna give you a router ID, three dot, three dot, three dot, three. And let's do a show. So we can see our networks that we need to justify to, so we got one nine two, one six eight, dot two, dot zero, so zero, zero dot zero. Two for five, zero. Run that back, we'll identify our three net. And we'll do that loopback. And let's just make sure we're saving our configurations, guys. And as you guys, adjacency to router two here, so R3. Hmm, see, we've got, we've got a couple OSPF entries here, um, for the one net and the two net. And you see the cost, so some of the cost is changing, stuff, several... For our ten net there. Alright, um, yeah, give away those, obviously that's not set yet. Um, must, must make sure we save that. Alright, turn up to R4 now. Four dot, four dot, four dot, four. Let's do. Network, yeah, cause this one's got a couple of networks we need to, um, we're gonna not gonna advertise this network though. We're gonna leave that out of the mix. Don't we? I don't know, um... Alright, so let's get started here, so we got network one nine two, six eight, dot two, that's zero. Zero. Run that back. We have a four net. Net. Alright, we're making adjacencies. Yeah, so it made an adjacency to R3 on both sides, we could see that too, um... So if we do a show. You can see our OSPF neighbors and their IDs here. And we see again, we have two neighbor entries for router three, um, off of our different interfaces here. And now if we do a show. Can see our OSPF entries. Alright, now we'll come to five, complete this. Okay, so the only two networks we have on router five is the four net and the ten net we need to advertise. Uh, so we're gonna say network. Zero. Same thing for the ten network. Then our loopback network. Alright. Alright, so let's take a look at some information we got now. So we have a couple OSPF entries on R5 now, um, to... Link locals. Yeah, so all of our, I was, I wanted to see what R4, let's test this. Maybe because that was how, they had us, that was kinda like the backbone, maybe, possibly, possibly. Again, we're not advertising this route on R4, um, that, you could see that, cause... So these are the only OSPF learned, uh, routes here. Uh, we have the two net. This again, this is R1, if we go back to our, um... Our desktop here. Obviously we have R1 here, um, R2 net, this is R2 network right here. R3 net, this is, this exists for our three net here, and then our four net. Net and two net, so those are our connected local. As you could tell, this is our forty net and forty, we have, we still don't have a route to our forty net. Cause we're not advertising it. And, but you could see though, um, let's do a show. You could see that OSPF replaced all the RIP routes in here, um, for itself. Now I believe there is a show. P route all. Oh, that doesn't come into play till we, oh, you guys can see all that. We ain't gonna see this entry until we get your cheer, peace out, that's next. Um, I believe we still do a show up here. Yeah, it's like OSPF. That's funny. Um, by default, OSPF advertises any subnet that's configured at home feedback enough for this. This is saying. That was trying to say. Alright, so a router could be configured with multiple routing protocols instead. Routing table may have more than one source, the same destination network if it occurs. Is what it's known. Install into the IP table. Table, the administrative distance represents trustworthiness of the route. The lower the administrative distance, the more trustworthy their route source. That goes over there, gotta touch that. Was there a place shut down on R1? Hard to go, now only, no. Yeah, I didn't see that originally, no. Oh, but he had, he had static routes for, I remember, he had static routes and all that setup. Let's do a show. The OSPF router process ID one database. Um, we have the link IDs, advertising router age, sequence, checksum, and then the link. The link count. What does the link count mean? Start. What else do I need to know about OSPF? Boy, can I move.
And EIGRP, our distance vector routing protocol two. So our IGP's are RIP, the routing information protocol, EIGRP, the enhanced interior gateway routing protocol, OSPF, which is open source path first, and ISIS, which is intermediate system to intermediate system. RIP and EIGRP are distance vector routing protocols and OSPFs, and that's all the IGP's that there are that are in use today. EIGRP is a Cisco proprietary distance vector routing protocol. And it's got some really good advantages that we'll speak about later. And because it's proprietary, Cisco would like you to use it because by hence it locks you into using purely Cisco devices. Now, like I said, it is a really good routing protocol. But distance vector routing protocols have got a bit of an inferior reputation as compared to link state routing protocols for the reasons that I just described. So Cisco don't want you to think of EIGRP as, however, to be honest, it's a distance vector routing protocol. It works the same way as RIP does. Cisco call it advanced because it's got more advanced metrics than RIP is, so it is a much better routing protocol than RIP. Again, as we get more into detail into the different routing protocols.
So ERGRP is like just RIP, advanced RIP. Um, let's see if it gets into BGP, uh, so you guys can see it. Um, got border gateway protocol, this is ERGRP, this is the other one that he was talking about. OSPF, OSPF version three, RIP, that's where we are. So we have done RIP, uh, RIP and OSPF resolution protocol. So we'll maybe jump into BGP here. And see, let me, check dibbity. Alright, so while that's stewing, while chat dibbity is stewing.
I'll explain why that is later on. Okay, so that's our different IGP's. And as I said earlier, our one and only EGP that is used today is BGP, the border gateway protocol. In the next several sections, I'll be covering the IGP's in depth. We'll get our IGP's, they all do the same job, which is to advertise routes within an organization and determine the best path or paths to the different networks. So an organization will typically pick one of the IGP's. They all do the same job, so there isn't really any need to use more than one of them. Actually, using more than one of them is a bad idea. But it does sometimes happen though, usually because of a merger or maybe just historical reasons. If that does happen, then information can be redistributed between the different routing protocols, but the best to avoid that is possible. Okay, so that was our different routing process in the lab in the next lecture. The routing protocols, so it's the same methodology we've been using for the last few demos of the routers, R1 to R5. And this is continuing on from the last demo where we already had RIP.
Stuff. Paths, so this is some of our RIP information routing for network.
Pipe single and then say section RIP. And it will just show me that part of the running config, so it's a lot more convenient. Another way you can do it is show run and then pipe it and say begin RIP. And it will begin the running config output, but you can see here I've got RIP configured on here. And to see the information that was received from RIP, I can do a show IP RIP database. And that will show me all the routes that were learned from the neighbors. So with our routing protocols, there's really three things that happen. The routers will form.